Call the committee of the whole meeting to our adoption of the agenda. This is the first item.
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Motion's carried. Delegation, minister, departmental reports. However, do you have a number of staff reports? First is page five, funding for projects carried forward to the 2013 capital plan. Staff are looking for recommendations of projects as listed with the budget items be carried forward to 2013.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion on any of those items?
I just like just a quick one. I know the cottonwood greenway, I understand anyway it's going to come in under that, under the amount on here, is that current?
In all likelihood, it should, yes. I'm not sure by how much, but it should, yes.
So it just goes into surplus, anything that's left over?
I would think that would be the case.
Go ahead, Councilor Grant.
Al, is there a target completion date for that cottonwood greenway?
We're battling weather right now, so that's the factor that's posing the most problems. I'm hoping to have it done, if anything that would help us, it would be some hard frost. That'll get us going, so it's predicated on weather. We want it done as soon as possible to have it off boats and move on to other things, of course, so I really can't pin down a firm date, but we're trying our hardest to get it moving.
Okay. Any further? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion's carried. Next report is page seven, from our Director of Recreation, looking for a motion to move that 5,500 of capital funding, capital funding, so it will be reallocated from purchases to installation of flooring in the gymnastics facility.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Questions or comments? I think all is in favor. Motion's carried. Page nine, from our Public Works engineer, recommendation of council, council authority staff to dispose of the surplus equipment as noted in staff report due to the development of the first.
I just had one quick question. The first six are obviously very old vehicles. I just wondered about the 2006 truck.
The doctor? Yeah, okay, I think your engineer can hopefully answer that.
The doctor's probably our number one piece of equipment that's out there, and then we've just been noticing that we're putting more and more time and money into repairing parts, and those are the type of, because of the need of this vehicle, every five years we tend to want to keep, make sure that's running smoothly and that there's no problems or hidden problems that we're not aware of, because it's the number one vehicle that we would have in the middle of the night for emergency situations, so ensure that that's up to date, quite important.
In terms of its age, though, I'd say that that's sort of the wear and tear of it?
Yeah, in use, yeah.
All right. Any further? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion's carried. All right, then, we have the report on the concept plan for replacement of municipal works carried, memo titled finance and replacement of buildings and concept plan report, all to be received.
Move, receive.
On receipt, all is in favor? Motion's carried. Any discussion? Most of us were up to the art earlier, there's some answers there, but certainly there can be any further discussion at this point, huh? On any of those reports? Yes?
Well, after taking the tour, it certainly does appear that there's a need to at least begin looking at replacement of both of those buildings, you know, from what we're seeing, it's, you know, it's time and we're growing and we're getting to be a bigger community, and, you know, it appears that we should be seriously looking at where we can go with that.
Yes?
Yes, and I certainly agree with Counselor Grant, and it was a very informative meeting. I think it was very visit to the public works and parks, and it's certainly a collection of buildings that have just grown like broccoli, and I understand have some problems, could have some problems in an earthquake, which I think is something we're about to be very cautious of, so I think this is a good first step.
Okay. Yeah, in terms of the financial aspects of it, which we talked about in the second number, from our Director of Finance, the good news, I suppose, is that we do have some reserve funding available to 2014 of $1.8 million for further capital contributions to reserve that could be reallocated as required to debt payment, so there is a, at least on a financial basis, a plan to move forward. Of course, we haven't yet determined what we're going to build exactly, whether it be one building, two buildings, or other types of facilities, so I guess I'd ask the C O at this point, tell us what would happen next from these reports from staff perspective, and then that will go back to council.
Well, we wanted to bring this forward at this stage, just to keep it in mind when we're working our way through the capital plan right now, and we bring the whole financial plan to council early in the new year, and we've included some, some numbers for further work in terms of design and a more detailed investigation of the site. So at this stage, nothing, but there's more coming in the new year.
Okay. Further at this time? That's Counselor Grant?
Yeah, it was really great to go up there and actually be on site and see the inadequacies and the cramped space, but certainly in the report, the things that really spoke to me were the safety issues, and I know that several items were there, there was a concern on safety, so I think it's incumbent on us that we proceed and move on this as best and as efficiently as we can.
So from a budgeting point of view, obviously, we'll have some funding in there, I see, for culinary design, that's still, is that money still there? I think that we're going to be spending some money on that in 2015, so that we can see where we might go in terms of the designing work. And I see that was part of the carry forward that we did earlier in the new year, so at that point, we see what it looks like in terms of making further decisions on. That's right. All right. Any further at this time? Seeing none, put your vote on receipt, so we'll move on to the next slide, which is budget finance, I think we're at, please. Yes, page 49, we are receiving a report here from our Director of Finance with a number of recommendations, so we can simply receive the report at the outset, or we can move all three recommendations at the same time? Do you want them separately, or are we wish to do?
I'll move all three.
Okay. Discussion, and to Director of Finance, we're putting this together, there's just some concerns going forward in terms of budget, but I'll let discussion ensue.
Yeah, in reading this report, I think policing is going to be a big issue as we get going, but the only concern I really have on this is in number two, where we assume it will be under 15,000, and of course, if we take where we are today at 13,626 and add 10%, you get to 14,990, so that's within 10 people. Now, 10% I realize is fairly significant growth, but, you know, it's not outside the realm of possibility that we would reach that at the next, at the next census, so I suppose we'll just monitor this as we go and change the plan if we need to, as it looks that way? Is that correct?
I think that's the gist of it. Yes, Director of Finance?
You worship, the memo does say 10% growth would leave us at the cusp, so that's why we're raising it explicitly, it needs to be thought about and talked about. If 2017 were, for instance, to be over 15,000, then we'd need an extra quarter million dollars added to the financial plan.
And 10% would be over in the course of five years, if we give a ticket? Yes?
I mean, I think it speaks a lot to the value of staying a small community here as long as we can, quarter of a million is a big chunk of money, and certainly when we, when we get to that, hopefully it's not just one over, because.
Somebody's ready to go out here.
Moving the boundary the other way, I think is that the case?
Which one of those press guys lives in Comox?
Yeah, no, it'll be an issue, I know the city of Comox went through this threshold a few years ago, and it created quite an impact for them in that transition year, and certainly it's a factor that may have pointed to over the years as a reason perhaps not to eliminate, because we bring your population over the threshold and begin to pay 90%. So we'll see where that goes, but certainly it's good to factor in line for our budget five-year plan. Further? I guess the only other comment I have is, in the past couple of budget discussions, we have deferred the additional police officer a couple of times, and you'll see that at this point, we're talking about 2014, and that's something we'll have to monitor. That is really the only way we control costs on policing, other than through provincial body, which signed a new 20-year deal, and of course, we signed the agreement for that. Each additional officer does cost upwards of $125,000 per year on ongoing basis, and you don't always end up paying full rate, because there's staffing shortages and so on, but that is really the only way to do it. Crime rates are said to be at 30-year lows, so it is something that we'll have to factor in, not necessarily for this next budget year, but certainly if we get to 2014, based on input from the community and so on, we'll have to see where we're at. All right. Any further? Seeing none on all three recommendations, all is in favor? Please, motion's carried. All right, now, a bit more meaty material here in terms of the first draft of the five-year capital plan, and staff are looking for a recommendation from the committee of the whole to receive that report, and that it can be used as a starting point for drafting the five-year financial plan. So mostly then, put that on the table, and then we can go through the details of this required. Okay, so open for discussion, there's quite a third of memo here from our Finance Director, and where we're at in various things, and of course, the detailed year-by-year allocation. Now, C O, before we get into discussion, what are you anticipating from council tonight, just to receive this material, provide specific comments? I mean, will we be looking at this again, I assume?
Correct. This is, this is your first look at it, it's an opportunity to ask questions, provide any direction you wish. It's not, we're not looking for approval at this stage, because early in the new year, we'll be bringing the operational side of the budget to you as well, and also bringing it all together, so this is, this is your first shot.
Okay. So with that in mind, open for further discussion. Counselor Grant?
Thank you, but to the chair of staff today, just ask on the designated improvements to the pedestrian crossing, pedestrian skina, I know there's been some interest in the community on that.
On top of page 54?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, second one down. What exactly the improvements entail?
Okay, that one up by Highland School?
Yeah.
Shelley, go ahead.
Yeah, we have some recommendations from the school to put it across, and we're not at this location, but closer down to the bus stop, so we had a look at it, and every intersection, if it's marked or not marked, is a legal crossing, so having, putting one in where they were recommending also did tie into another pedestrian, it was just the boulevard, there's no sidewalk on the south side here, and as well, it was quite a bit of pedestrian bothering coming across skina, the amount of what the transit uses as well would be a bit difficult to cross, so we hold more of a multiple user crossing, and it just kind of made sense. So we would put in the, just a proper curve return on the west side of skina, and then tie into that, we did already a letdown on the north side of the street as well, so we might need to move the bus down a little bit further down, but we will have a look at all that, too.
No signals?
No signals, no.
So will there be a painted crosswalk on them?
It'd just be a painted crosswalk, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the proper signage.
There are signals on the one that Torrance, I think?
Yeah, the signals that Torrance can go through. Putting signals, there's no really warrant for them, but because that's certainly more of the elementary than younger kids, that it was recommended through our 2011 transportation study, that if we were going to put any type of pedestrian beaker, that would be the motivation that they were recommending.
All right.
Thank you.
Counselor Grant?
There was a citizen that asked me to ask a question when this appropriate time came up, in regards to some work from the past that was supposed to be targeted towards Queens, and road improvement, and street work, and it had been shelved for emergency purposes several years back, and I wondered if that has ever been revisited by staff?
I'm not sure what works or recommended that you're speaking of, but part of our 2011 transportation study, nothing came out of that for any type of road improvements by Queens?
Perhaps I could get some information from you.
Yeah.
It might have been something in the history books, I don't recall it at my time here.
Yeah.
Probably goes back a long time.
I don't know, Tom, the road's not in that bad of shape, actually.
Was there anything specific in that review, Counselor Grant?
No, I just, it was a general question that I just answered. Just twigged the memory to ask it.
I think it was an elevated freeway, wasn't it?
Well, he wanted to carry Queens on through the golf course.
That's the only reason. All right, seeing enough of the media, are we? Okay. Counselor Grant?
I was just wondering on the third bullet up from the bottom, the parts, 2014 parts, the soft footfall material, replacing the sand with soft fall, is that, is it rubberized or?
No, soft fall is an engineered wood fiber. It's similar to the treatment we've, we've used over at the New Lions Park up in the Franklin Estates area, we've also used it around the new fitness equipment, Naos Door Fitness Equipment in Henderson Park. It's a recognized very resilient and somewhat affordable option to traditional sand treatments. Sand is no longer recognized as a good fall material for playgrounds and such, so we ask for this money to bring the soft fall in, to convert those playgrounds that we feel are non-comfulible to constables that are conform.
All right. Any further on the first draft? Just noting here again, that final paragraph of this report indicates that the recommendation, of course, is that we proceed to draft based on this initial draft of capital plan, and we revisit those capital expenses as required to help balance the financial plan in whole after it's drafted, so there's plenty of opportunities we move forward in terms of the operational plan and capital. Unless there's anything else, jumping out, questions, comments, and we'll carry on. All is in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you, Director of Finance, for bringing that to us in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
All right, a couple items of correspondence. First of all, from the golf course, golf club, Gord Bode, actually, who's a citizen, former public works foreman here, he has brought a letter forward to us, and I think there's been some discussion, so move, receive the letter, and then we'll have some discussion.
Move, receive.
Thank you.
On receipt then, all in favor? Motion's carried, and I'll turn it over to our City Engineer, I believe has been discussing this.
Yeah, I can give you a bit of an update on this, I believe, you're probably aware a little bit of above the well on Trail Street, that it serves a lot of that source for Village of Comox at the time, I think in the early 60s or 70s, when the regional district took it over, and at that point, I think the capacity of the well, if we're looking back in notes, was about 200 gallons per minute, per minute that it was noted at, so, and I think since then, the town has never used the well for any type of, any for use, and I believe that the golf course had been using it, to their gain of airways for a number of years, so it served their purpose well. I think it was back in August or July of the summer, when I had gotten a phone call from the golf course, in reference to the pump failing at that time, so wanted to know if we had any type of recommendations on, you know, pardon me, improvements to the well, and at that point, we had nothing in the plans to replace that pump, so as you saw from Gord's letter, that they had replaced the well, or the pump, and that gallon per minute pumps as well, and to do some much upgrades to the building, so I'm sure that probably served them for many more years to come. I agree with Gord of his, you know, his recommendation for us to use maybe the well as backup water source for the town, for any type of earthquake and emergency situation that we might need that, I think it's a good resource to have in town, and I think that was always the town's intention, and knowing that it was there, that we could use it for emergency situations. I'm not sure about upgrading it to, to fight fire, just speaking with the chief, if we were looking at, the town gets water sourced from three different sources, from the regional district, we have the Noel Reservoir, we have the Eastport Reservoir, we also have McDonald Road, so the town, I mean, we would be looking at a major emergency disaster situation if all three mains or sources were cut off, that the town was completely isolated. I think at that point, we might be looking at flooding, as opposed to, you know, for fighting fires, so talking with the chief, we probably use maybe more of the water down at the harbor, it'll probably fill up a lot faster, and therefore, we'd probably maybe look at the well for more domestic use. So I agree that maybe we should be looking at that, I think the gallon per minute would probably serve that purpose, but I agree, I mean, I think we need to, we need to have more of a plan in place, what actions, what procedures we would do, what type of emergency equipment we would need, the well, its generators, its equipment, how we're going to store that water, is it possibly water flatters or tanker trucks, how we distribute it, can we distribute it there, bring it to maybe for a refuge station like, you know, the rec center, or schools, or that type of thing, so I think there is some thought to put in a plan there, just didn't have time since August to do that, but I mean, it's something that I can look into.
So, a couple of comments, really, one is, the regional district does most of the emergency prep stuff, we contribute to that through our budget, I know from my time there, sitting in meetings, that there were various generators and things, structures with some funding in place, that might be a request we could do, of course, we also, as a result of the recent earthquake up in Hayabwi, everyone's been encouraged yet again to be sufficient for 72 hours, I know our fire chief was telling us about the people now, again, showing up at the emergency prep courses, so I guess there's always a question about where the town has a responsibility, where individuals have that responsibility, I don't know whether it would make any sense to consider, have staff put something together towards the regional district for potential funding of that, so, you know, it's one of those things that other parts of the valley have benefited, I don't know whether it's a generator or some other type of emergency prep material, so I'll just throw that out there.
I think we could probably, yeah, have that further discussion with the regional district in regards to, obviously, they have an emergency response plan, and I mean, also, we have, we have the reservoir, so I think that's one of their plans, there was something that they couldn't get any water, is that we would close down the reservoir and use that water more sparingly, that's in the reservoir, and hold that, if it were a storm, it's a standing, because you're looking at major, major earthquakes of that situation, where all three sources coming into the town is cut, completely cut off.
I guess, a direction to staff, perhaps, or some other kind of, yes?
I think it's certainly worth looking into whether there is money through earthquake preparedness, emergency preparedness, but we, you can lose a well, too, in an earthquake, can't you, that you can't guarantee that it'll still be there when things are moved about?
Yes, Counselor Grant?
So are you looking for a recommendation to, a recommendation something along the lines of having Shelley talk to the regional district regarding funding from the emergency preparedness? How would you see that going?
I think a recommendation is just referring this matter back to staff, and we will work with Mr. Bode, and we'll work with the regional district as to what their outline of emergency provision of water would be. As Shelley pointed out, the ability to pump domestic water if necessary, and if the well still existed, of $90 per minute is probably more than that, but we do have generators as well, portable generators that may meet this need, but I think if we refer to staff, we'll, we'll speak with Mr. Bode, we'll speak with the regional district, and.
Motion to refer to staff?
Motion to refer to Lisa.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you, staff. All right, and the other matter that was referred here by the regional district is the weighted votes issued from the Water Committee, we have two representatives here from the Water Committee, perhaps the Chair of the Water Committee can fill us in here.
There's just been a great deal of confusion over, over how, actually, what the baseline vote means, and, and I think we finally got some clarity on it, you know, I've been working with a couple of Courtney City Councilors to explain to them that, see, they were worried that if the regional district approved this 64111 voting, that they could get outvoted, because there's, they only have six votes, and the others have seven, but this is the baseline vote, they actually have seven votes now, and we have four votes, but if we don't change the policy with regards to these four votes, on January the 1st, Comox is going to lose a vote based on water consumption, because this vote wasn't, because when we gave Comox the extra vote, we didn't alter the policy, and so all we're trying to do is change the policy with regards to the baseline votes, and I'm sure that will be done on December 11th, and as long as it's done, and as long as we change the policy on the baseline voting in December, come January 1st, it's not the Water Committee's prerogative to award anybody votes, it's, James Warren at the Regional District looks strictly at the water consumption and gives votes based on consumption, and as long as the baseline voting is 64111, Comox will never fall below four votes, and we may at one point go up to five votes, and, but Courtney might go up to eight votes before we ever hit five votes, but we're just trying to establish this baseline voting, and it's been a, we thought we had it done back in March, when we gave Courtney seven votes and Comox four votes, and the other electoral areas one vote, but what we didn't do was change the policy to bring this into effect more, on a more permanent basis, so, isn't that as clear as much to you guys?
I'm sure Patty understands.
I was just no mud in the water.
I'm pretty sure I understood this before you started talking.
It's baseline voting.
So, it was referred back, I understand, by Courtney Council, was there some confusion on their part then?
I believe so, and they thought that they were losing a vote, and I clarified that now, and it was referred back to both councils, Courtney's going to deal with it at their council meeting next Monday, and we're going to have another meeting of the Water Committee immediately before the inaugural meeting of the Regional District on December 11th, and there's only going to be one thing on the agenda, and that's this, so hopefully we'll all get straight.
Surprised you have a hand up, I think.
Yes, and just a further question to the Chair of the Water Board, Counselor Grant, so you don't see this as being a problem, you see this as more an administrative issue that's come up?
It's not a problem, it's just more housekeeping than anything, it's, it's to get the policy in order, and which we haven't done. There was some suggestion that we open up the bylaw to change the bylaw, but there's not as much appetite to do that, so we're going to try and do it just through a policy change.
Go ahead.
Do you not think this highlights a problem with where the bylaw is set up, because if this didn't go through setting the baseline, if I understand it correctly, this, Comox would end up with three votes in the new year, and A, B, and C will each have one apiece, and Courtney would have seven, so you would get a situation where one of the entities actually controlled the committee, so basically, really, no one else hypothetically needs to turn up, and so, you know, what I'm hearing from you is that situation in the next year is going to be headed off at the pass, and, and Comox would have the four, and we would have that balance there, but it could happen in another year, is this not something that should be dealt with in the long term, so that we'd never have a situation where one entity had complete control of the system?
Well, because our letters patent back in 1995 or '96, when they were drawn up, you get another vote based on consumption, there is going to come a day, I envision it, where Courtney is going to have eight votes, and Comox will have four, and Area A, B, and C, one vote. I believe that's going to happen, and when we decided that we were going to start awarding these, break outside the 12 votes that Gol, Wilson originally wrote in the letters patent, we asked for, Comox asked for a dispute resolution mechanism. for a dispute resolution mechanism whereby if Courtney tried using their majority votes to do things that were detrimental to the other participants in the water committee, that we would, you know, we would just dispute it, and it would go to dispute resolution. And hopefully, if we had a case, then our case would be brought forward, and the mediator or dispute resolution person would award in our favor. So there will come a time where they're probably going to carry the majority of the votes on it, but they can't use those votes to the detriment of the other water committee members.
That's the hope.
Yes.
That is the hope.
Well, with the dispute resolution, you know, I mean, if they do something that is detrimental, and we crack open or we invoke the dispute resolution, and they are doing something that's unfair, they're going to lose. So why would they even want to bring that up?
It speaks to fairness and equity, as I see in the material here. And of course, there's always the ability, Counselor Price would know from past experience of doing the service for you.
I mean, personally, I think it's something that should be looked at. And I think that, you know, maybe there was some inherent flaw in using that formula of consumption, in that, you know, Comox citizens have been very proactive in controlling water usage, I'm sure Courtney is, but it sort of, it almost makes you want to go, okay, we're coming up to the end of the year, everyone turn their taps on, just so that we don't have to go through a cumbersome mechanism of dispute resolution if something came up. You know, sort of having that balance at the table seems like a better way to run the business.
I mean, it would be the politicians that want the water consumption to go up, and not the people that are actually paying for it. I mean, they wouldn't even know what you're talking about. And actually, if you want to know the truth, Courtney's water consumption as a percentage basis is going up at a smaller rate than Comox's.
Well, we'll...
It's largely smaller.
Yeah. We'll see where things go. Obviously, different growth patterns, too, dictate how water consumption, not just the fact that existing users, but also potential new users, as Courtney expands perhaps its boundaries more than we do, and sees that growth, that could have an effect on it. The other thing, of course, to consider is that there's still sort of a possibility that this could become a broader valley-wide commission at some point. That's still an open question. Certainly, there was some discussion that with the water supply commission, Cumberland may be part of it in the woods. So, you know, I guess we can't always determine what's going to happen down the line. There is at least some hope that this slight hiccup in isn't going to be an issue by December eleventh, or hopefully, it'll all be resolved.
The way the letters patent were written back in nineteen ninety-six, there is an inherent flaw in there. It's caused legal arguments over the years, as, you know, those of us who've been around long enough know. And, you know, we're trying, you know, the water committee over the last year has tried to come to a resolution on this that is really fair to everybody. And, I mean, let's be fair to Courtney, too. They're paying over sixty percent of the costs of the water committee, and, you know, it's a tremendous burden on them, and, you know, they have a right to have a say in what goes on.
Well, I don't think it was questioned that. It's kind of interesting when you compare this voting structure to the one of the sewage commission, which is, I think, what, roughly two-thirds, one-third on a flow basis, but our votes are equal. You know, maybe sewer isn't quite as exciting as water.
I wonder his face.
You know, in terms of voting on issues around that, it's, we have three reps, they have three reps, so, you know, it's curious why water has become more important.
Well, the difference is, of course, is that with sewer, it's us and them, Courtney and Comox. With the water, it's area A, B, and C. And, you know, you get area A out there, they've got fifty people hooked up to our water system, and they have the same vote as area B, you know, that's got eight thousand people hooked up to the water system. Well, they don't.
Well, perhaps someday, there'll be a regional governance system that makes sense to everybody. That'll be another day.
The press would like to speak to you after.
Regional Water Governance, I think.
So are we looking to receive this document?
I think it's been received. We can do a motion, sure.
Okay, I move to see the doc.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion's carried. Any further discussions? Motion. Big good luck on the eleventh. We'll be watching. All right, so that is, I think that is enough. So we do have a camera meeting, so motion's through. Six seconds. All in favor?